Hey, hey, what's up? How's everybody?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Councilman Schiller. How are you? Do you have an extra tie? Okay. It's... Everyone's good?
Yeah.
Y'all good? Good evening. The council meeting of February 4 will come to order and would ask all in attendance to please turn off or silence your electronic devices and if we could please stand to honor God and country. Father God, we turn this meeting over to your divine authority. We can give, we can serve, but without love we are zeros, specifically without your love. So, Father, may motives of the heart be clearly revealed. May those here to serve you be pleasing in your eyes. As we entered the month that by tradition we demonstrate and celebrate love one to another, may our tone, our words, our actions demonstrate love one to another as we conduct the business of this city. Amen. Hand to heart as we pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk to your right. First this evening would ask Mr. Greg Vauder, past president of League of Women Voters and a Temple Terrace resident, to come to the podium.
Good evening and thank you for being here this evening, sir. I am sure that you are earnest in your beliefs and have every right to promote causes that are important to you. I will be turning your proclamation over to the individual that requested you be on the agenda this evening. The council of the City of Temple Terrace is to remain nonpartisan in our work. I have read the proclamation that indicates your organization is such. However, this afternoon I received a phone call from an extremely distressed citizen who challenged me to visit the League of Women Voters website and I would challenge those who are here this evening and those who are viewing this evening to do so. Specifically, I was challenged to look at League of Women Voters and gun control and League of Women Voters and reproductive rights, specifically work on government-funded abortions. As I traveled down the rabbit trail, it became apparent that the advocacy work that is now being undertaken by the League is clearly aligned with one political party and one train of political thought. I do believe that the League had an admirable beginning and mission. Today, however, it appears to be a political action group. In addition, items on our agenda, especially items that are potentially controversial, are to be brought to council in advance, discussed on by council per our rules of procedure. And that didn't happen and I apologize to you, sir, that it didn't happen. Due to sunshine law, I was unable to reach out to any of my fellow council members. But every person on the dais knows we are to act as a body. We vote on items and everyone realized we are to be nonpartisan. I apologize for any embarrassment this creates for you, however...
This does not create embarrassment for me. It gives me the opportunity, I hope, to respond.
But it's not appropriate for this party to celebrate a political action group and so...
I agree. It would not be appropriate if we were a political action group. However, we are a nonpartisan organization and have been since the very beginning. The organization does take positions on issues before us, no matter whether it's national, state, or local, and we have been involved in those issues over time. And what this proclamation is to celebrate is the 100th anniversary of the founding of the League of Women Voters, which occurred right after women got the right to vote. And that was due to a lot of people doing a lot of hard work. And those people then decided, you know, we need to form an organization to encourage everybody to vote and to examine the issues, take stands on those issues, and then go forward and try to make the best we can of our elected organization, that being the government of the United States, the government of the state of Florida, and the government of Temple Terrace. So, that's what we're about. If you choose not to take the opportunity to celebrate our 100th anniversary, that's up to you, but we will celebrate regardless. And I would also like to take the opportunity to invite each of you to indeed go to the website and look over not only our positions but our background. And I brought with me some membership forms because I'm not only a past president of the organization, but I'm also a past membership chair of the organization. So, I'd like to offer those to you and let you know that our nonpartisan organization would welcome all of your memberships to the organization, whether you're a member of the council, on staff, or someone here in the general public.
Ms. Donahue.
Well, I'm not sure, Mayor, that I understand what you would like for me to do. Am I to give him the proclamation or... I mean, I follow the protocol that I understand, which was to ask Mr. Stevenson if this could happen. He's the only one who can speak directly to you and to others. And when I got the word that I'd been given the okay, I let Mr. Vauder know that he was going to be on the agenda and invited him to be here. So, I too apologize to you that I had no idea that there was any issue about this particular proclamation. So, I'm not sure exactly what you would like for me to do. This is... This has your signature on it. If you'd like for me to read it, I will, but the words you've said indicate that this needs to be approved by council, so...
And that is, per our policy and procedures, we have always said that we act as a body. So, in a previous meeting, if there is something that's potentially controversial, it should have come before this body. And at that point, I think we would have discussed that this is an organization that takes definite political stances and aligns with a definite political party. And it's not appropriate, in my view. Again, this might be under new business that you want to bring it up and ask your colleagues on the council if they would like to vote to become engaged in this.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Vauder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Riverwatch Task Force regular member appointment. There is one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force. The sole applicant is Carol Dell. Her term expired and she is eligible for reappointment. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Carol Dell to the Riverwatch Task Force for a term extending from February 4, 2020 until February 4, 2023.
Move to approve her... Reappoint Carol Dell to the Riverwatch Task Force.
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries, and thank you, Ms. Dell, for your willingness to serve our community. Next, council, if the minutes of our January 21, 2020 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Are there any corrections? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. Next, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all items from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of those items that are related to city business and will be followed up on. First up, Annette Rennie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll put my reading glasses on. I'm here to say to our mayor, I'm proud of you and all your accomplishments. You are a good person, you're full of love, kindness, intelligent, and always ready to help. This city has accomplished a lot under your leadership. Mayor, I know you and I know your heart. I believe in you, and even if you had a high school diploma, I would have voted for you. I do believe in you and I believe everything you say. To those of you who are here to cast hate or hurt, a very good person, my sympathy goes out to you because hate accomplishes one thing, the destruction of the one who hates. So, I ask going forward, let's keep going with redevelopment, streets, parks, being business-friendly, as well as being a city who welcomes new people to our city and new businesses, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Ellen Snelling.
Good evening. I'm resident of Temple Terrace. So, I'm here tonight to speak about the mayor and the many accomplishments of the entire city, the city council, the city manager, as well as the mayor. And I wanted to say specifically about the mayor because some things have come up in the media and I feel like that it's starting to give our city a bad reputation, whereas we have done so much in the mayor and the city council as well as the city manager. And I voted for Mel because of her integrity, work ethic, and her campaign promises. And the truth is that her campaign promises have come true. And some of the things that have happened is that downtown redevelopment. I mean, that's huge. And again, it's not, of course, just the mayor, but it's under her leadership that all of you have made this happen. And the groundbreaking should be soon. We should have luxury apartments. And one of the things I'm really looking forward to is Starbucks. I hope that works out. The Temple Terrace City Council and mayor worked hard on a plan to resolve all the financial issues of our country club. Look how far they've come. It's a beautiful facility, up to date with all their payments. Everything's going great there. Membership's improved. More milestones. Renovation of the Temple Terrace Rec Center. That's one of my favorite places. Bill and I are up there all the time and Jake. It's such a beautiful facility now. There's always an improvement. There's some acoustical improvements recently, and I love the little cafe that's there, the Focus Cafe. Again, three years ago, look at the rec center. I mean, there was mildew and stuff dripping out... dripping out of the ceiling. More milestones would be the Buddy Baseball. And again, I know that's the county and the state and everyone working together, but look how proud we should all be of that facility and the access for handicapped children. And the other... The last one that I wanted to talk about, and there's many more, but Mel and the Temple Terrace Police Chief Albano worked diligently, along with all of you and citizens from the community, to make the Boys and Girls Club happen. And that's something that we can look forward to for years to serve our community. So, I guess I just want to say that I just want to thank Mel for all her hard work and for being such a strong person to stand up to some of the criticisms that I feel have nothing to do with your work as a mayor. And I just appreciate the work of everyone up here and the things that we've accomplished in our city. Thank you.
Marcy Lieber.
Hello. I'm Marcy Lieber and I live at 6624 Glen Co. I moved here... My family moved here almost 45 years ago, and we loved it. And I have to admit, I really didn't want to come here. We lived in Palmasia and I liked it, but my husband worked for the company that developed the land north of Druid Hills, almost up to Fowler. We had a great deal. So, here's the plan. We're going to build a house, we're going to make some money, and then we're getting out of here. And then I started having babies, so that didn't happen. But it turned out it was a wonderful neighborhood, a wonderful community to raise children in, to do just about anything you wanted. It was a small but growing community back then. I love the community. I love the trees and, you know, everything was nice. Everyone was very friendly, and eventually the retail and services blossomed. We had more and more things available here, and I rarely had to leave the city for anything I might need. But my concern is the direction the city has gone in recent couple decades. All we have gotten is, from the redevelopment that I can see, is a lovely gazebo and a nice pasture, but we don't even have goats to put in it. So, I'm kind of disappointed because it's been almost 20 years and I was told everything was going to be hunky-dory, and so far it has not. Temple Terrace has frankly... It's worn me out. I've worked hard for this city. I've loved this city. I benefited from my friendships here, but I'm just tired of the fight. I'm tired of the disappointments. So, I won't be driving to Wesley Chapel or Brandon anymore to shop, and I'm disappointed with some of the citizens here who profess love for the city but behave in such a way that it doesn't seem like they're very interested in promoting... Well, not promoting the city, but, you know, increasing the city. So, for several reasons, one of them health. I'm giving up. We're leaving. We're going. We're moving away. I never thought I would do that, but it's come to the point where that's what's going to happen. Part of the reason is health, but also I don't have... I don't have the hope for Temple Terrace that I used to. So, I wish you well. I will miss all of you. I've got some wonderful friends and wonderful experiences here, but it's time for me to go someplace else. Adieu.
Thank you, Ms. Lieber. You did bring it up. I would like to share with you, we do have the groundbreaking of the redevelopment for the Paragon Group on February 26 at, I believe it's 12:30 in the afternoon. So, if you are here, we'd love to have you there, and shortly behind them will be the Paragon Group. Joe Affronti.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I just wanted to say, I've been reading so much garbage on Facebook about Mel and her lies and this and that. Number one, Mel did not lie. If she said she graduated from Harvard, that would have been a lie, but she didn't. She graduated from LaSalle. I did a little research on LaSalle, and LaSalle has an affiliate in... Or had one in London. And a case came before the court regarding the validity of a degree that somebody earned from LaSalle, and this was in 2006. And the case was regarding the validity of the degree. The case was heard. They ruled in favor of the gentleman that had the degree. LaSalle University degree upheld in course, case number Royal Courts of Justice Strand, Strand, London. It upheld his degree, said that it was valid, even though the LaSalle was terminated. All right, then. Organization news. This is here in Louisiana. On a motion of regent, these seconded the regent Rambeau, the board voted unanimously to accept the recommendations of the Planning Research and Performance Committee to approve an operating license for LaSalle University. LaSalle University information provided by the National Center of Education Statistics and the Carnegie Foundation. LaSalle University had a... I have a problem with this word. Apostolate, apostolate, whatever, which is an affirmation of the state of Louisiana certifying good standing of LaSalle University as an entity with legal status. The apostolate confirms that the signatures of the officials of the degree is a true signature of the person. It also verifies the validity of the degree. It may not be accredited by the accreditation agency, but the degree is valid. So, these are the things that really get to me. Mel worked very hard. She attended there from May... From March 95 to July 95 when she got her degree. So, in the... No, the... I'm sorry. She graduated in March of 95 and it was discredited in July of 95. So, she had her degree before they had the problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Affronti. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening?
Hi, my name is Tara Ferguson. I live at 403 Druid Hills here in Temple Terrace. So, I would like to thank some of my great neighbors. We heard about a lot of things moving forward. My husband and I have been here two and a half years and we were very excited to come to Temple Terrace. And we were looking for a city that was very diverse and a neighborhood. My husband served in the Marine Corps for 22 years, and we needed a place to be planted. And I actually know a lot of the names of the people in this room, and I like the fact that we're very diverse. I volunteer over at the church just down the road, then they partner with Hillsborough County, and they have hundreds of immigrant students from... I sat with a woman today from Afghanistan. She... Her husband actually served with the American military in Afghanistan. They're past two. And I love that about our city. I love that our city is so diverse that I have friends with many of our octogenarians in this city. And gosh darn, I had a supper with a gentleman not too long ago last week, and he's been in the city since 1970. Found out Mr. Ritter's been here since 1945, was welcomed by him and his wife. Our city has accomplished a lot. Ms. Ellen mentioned that. Our city has not accomplished a lot. My neighbor is saying, I'm a little worn out. I've got some things to do. But we're all still here. Now, my concern, and I wasn't going to speak today, my concern is, I want to remind us that we are great neighbors. We have volunteers. We have people who do serve. We have a great library. We have people who drive the community bus. My neighbor gave me oranges. My other neighbor gave me star fruit. We have volunteers. I can go on. We have council members that have cleaned up people's yards. We have other council members that are businessmen here. We have other council members that are raising their grandchildren here. For somebody who's been all over the world, this is a great place to live, and I would encourage anybody, yeah, you know what? I do want to shop in Temple Terrace. I do. I don't want to have to drive, and some of that needs to change. But we can be and we are good neighbors, and good neighbors make great communities. Thank you for Temple Terrace for welcoming us. I really appreciate you guys, and I'd rather we talk more about that than anything else.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward. Public hearings, a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code, firefighter pensions and retirement, adding cancer presumption. Fire chief Ian Kemp, firefighter pension chairman, will explain.
Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney, Ian Kemp, your fire chief. I stand before you tonight to have the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code, firefighter pension and retirement, adding a cancer presumption. Senate Bill 426 amends Chapter 112 Florida statute by creating Section 112.1816 governing disability and death benefits for firefighters, effective July 1, 2019. An additional presumption was added to the disability and pre-retirement line of duty death presumptions. Diagnosis of cancer or the circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer, a firefighter shall be considered totally and permanently disabled in a line of duty if he or she meets the plan's definition of total and permanent disabled due to the diagnosis of cancer or circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer. A firefighter shall be considered to have died in line of duty if he or she dies as a result of cancer or circumstances that arise out of the treatment of cancer. The Board of Trustees of the City of Temple Terrace Firefighters Retirement System has prepared this ordinance to implement the statutory presumptions in Chapter 112 and 175 Florida statute, including Senate Bill 426, effective July 1, 2019. It is recommended that a city council approve the proposed ordinance adding a new language regarding the firefighter cancer presumption that became effective July 1, 2019 after passing passage of Senate Bill 426.
Thank you, chief. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address council on this item this evening? Seeing none, we will continue. Council questions? Councilman Schisler.
Yes, chief. When this came up, again, I'm not contesting the issue. I'm all for it, but I do have a question. When this came up, was there any discussions by our actuarial staff that had discussed what the impact would be, given our current firefighter population, on the retirement requirements and disability requirements of our current...
There was. As a matter of fact, the state mandates, anytime there's a change that are actuarial, does an actuarial assumption. And basically, let me see the numbers here. I think it was in... I'm pretty sure this would have been in your packet. It looks to be a minimum contribution will go up about $12,000 to $13,000 per year. Yes, sir.
Council, other questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read title of ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration and Elections, Article 3 Officers and Employees, Division 3, Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision 4 Firefighters of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Temple Terrace, to implement the conclusive firefighter cancer presumption established by Section 112.1816 Florida statutes and rebuttable disease presumptions under Florida statutes, Sections 112.18, 112.181, and 175.231. Amending Section 2-206, Subparagraph 3 of the retirement system relating to the pre-retirement death benefits. Amending Section 2-207A of the retirement system relating to the line of duty disability benefits, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for a repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. If acceptable... If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve on first reading.
So, moved on first reading.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. The ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, February 18, 2020. Item 8B, a resolution approving a three-year agreement with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC. Public Works Director of Operations, Ray LeBlanc, will explain. Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We have a resolution seeking approval. It's for a three-year agreement with Southern Disaster Recovery LLC. This is a no-cost standby agreement which protects the city should there be a natural disaster during a contract period. It doesn't interfere with any other contracts that we have. The FEMA requirements that are within this additional agreement, which will be a second layer of protection, are more up to date than the current one we have in 2016, which was signed. It puts the city... Will put the city in a better position to locate crews for the FEMA contracted rates, which vary from time to time, and it'll have less scrutiny by FEMA post-event should the disaster company be needed. Southern Disaster Recovery has been in business since 2011. The actual senior director, I've had a working relationship with him for about 15 years. So, this will give us two layers of protection, and we're asking to authorize the city manager for a three-year agreement, effective today.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. I would ask if there are any members of the citizenry who would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, council questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the city manager to execute the three-year agreement with Southern Disaster Recovery for Disaster Recovery Services.
Moved to proceed, ma'am.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Next, a resolution approving the addition of a building inspector to position. Community Development Director Amir Nisi will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of council. I put the report together. I would like to enter it into the record. like to enter it into the, uh, record. Okay, basically the report you have before you, um, pretty much cover, um, the activity for building division within community development for past four years. It's a very comprehensive report. Uh, basically outlined the number of inspection, number of the permit per month, per quarter, and also shows the total revenue, um, generated by building department, uh, from permitting and also, um, from the planning division. However, our focus tonight is basically on the building division. So based on this report, uh, going back to 2016, uh, fiscal year 1617, um, shows that the improvement, uh, in our revenue, um, uh, from, um, pretty much, uh, by, uh, from, uh, $356,949. That was the total revenue on page 12s. That's from 2016, 2017, uh, revenue. And subsequent to that, 217, 218, we saw, uh, additional revenue coming to the building department by, uh, uh, 28% from 356. We went on to, uh, 458. And again, uh, for 2, uh, 1819, from, um, 458, we went to 581. So, um, pretty much it shows that the trend and the, uh, construction and development activity throughout the, uh, past four years. Historically, we have had one inspector, uh, pretty much cover residential inspection and building official does the plan review and the commercial inspections, um, for, uh, all the permits we issued. But with development, uh, within the city at all-time high and the workload continue to expand, uh, um, within the building division, service, uh, we provide, uh, is, uh, become essential, uh, to conducting the daily business because the workload is, is, is so much, uh, coming through the door. Uh, we have to maintain the service. We have to maintain the level of service we have been providing to the public. At the, at this trend would be extremely difficult, uh, to maintain that level of service. Uh, so if the current trend continue moving forward, we would project, uh, 35% in revenue, uh, for 219, 220. That's very conservative, uh, if you compare the information from last three years. But again, uh, some of us involving, um, development is very hard to predict. Okay? Uh, you may have an applicant come through the door, but again, uh, things may not go in the right direction. They may, again, uh, close the plan and move forward. So, uh, with that said, these are the record, uh, for review, uh, for you. We put it together. It's very clear. It's very solid information. If you have any question, I'd be happy to answer, but definitely shows that again, we expanded, uh, our service, we expanded our, uh, revenue. Uh, we expanded our inspections. So everything is, uh, pretty much climbing up. Uh, and on the very last page, I put few projects. Again, uh, they're in planning stage. Some of them, again, they're under construction, some of them. Uh, we are working on it. Uh, we will bring it before you pretty soon for annexation, for cycle and approval, for rezoning, so forth and so on. But again, just to give you a little bit of information what is happening in the building department moving forward. So, uh, and respectfully, I'm asking for approving this resolution moving forward to adding this staff to be able to help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If you, if you would come to the podium and state your name, Ms. Ferguson.
Sorry. My name is Tara Ferguson. Sir, the 75,000, is that a salary plus benefits or would the, the town also incur monies for benefits?
I believe that's a total package. Uh, that is just a projection of the salary and the benefit altogether. Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that have questions or comments?
Um, I would like to add, in the timing we are, having licensed inspector onboard is extremely difficult because the same issue we have, other municipalities they have. If you have somebody licensed, it's very difficult to bring them onboard. Sometimes you get to the negotiation as far as their salary based on their qualifications. So you have to be able to compensate them for a small municipalities like us. Otherwise, um, Hillsborough County currently, they have 10 position open, City of Tampa or other jurisdiction like us, uh, would have a difficulty to bring qualified person, licensed and established person. And, um, that's why, again, you see the figure before you. So.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. Uh, council questions? Councilwoman Donahue, and then I'll go to Councilman Ross.
I, I would just like for Ms. Ferguson to go with you when you're recruiting people to our city because, you know, she's, she's a good recruiter.
I have the house that needs the inspectors.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think this is a move that will keep, um, you know, one of the problems we've had in the past was people complained, maybe inappropriately because they thought you guys should jump over mountains to help their one project. But moving forward like this means that we recognize that we are growing and quickly. So this is a good thing. You have to, um, spend money to make money, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Council, uh, uh, Councilman Ross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Anisi.
Yes.
I'm not sure whether this is a question for you or, or Mr. Stevenson, but I've had some concern for a while. Um, this, this doesn't come as a shock to me because I've been hearing this has been growing for a while.
Sure.
Um, so I, I'm all in favor of this. But my question is, what about the planning staff? Because I know in order to get to the point of getting permits and inspections, it takes a great deal of effort by the planning staff to get there. And I, I know that our planning staff has done a tremendous job under your direction, but I know that they've been taxed and spread thin for the past few years as well. So has there been any discussion or do you anticipate any? Um, and I, I'm not looking for ways to spend more money, but I'd really like to fix the, the problem.
Sure.
As opposed to waiting until we get on these future projects, 60 days in and we hit a logjam and then somebody resigns unexpectedly and we can't process the, so do we need more planners is what I'm asking?
Again, we'd love to have it.
The reason I ask is I think we do, right? I think this goes hand in hand, doesn't it?
It, it does. And, and it, building inspections and, and building permits don't go out there until you get projects approved. And it makes total sense to look at that as well. I think that right now we're probably in good shape. We have two tremendously capable planners that are turning out this work. I think that, um, as we move along, we've got a lot of things coming into pike and a lot of things that have come into pike since we established our last budget. That's the reason for this position. Um, right now it is, um, we're maintaining and I think we'll be okay with planners. Um, I will reserve that, that conversation for when we put the new budget together because there's some, some other stuff that's coming in towards the later part of the year. So, um, we may need something, but right now I, I think we're okay.
Yes. For time being, we are okay. But we will, again, address it as need to be as we move forward. So, planning typically take longer to process and a slower process compared to zoning and buildings. Like, once you break the ground, developer wants to build, they are on the time clock. But planning, again, I mean, we could have stretched it a little bit, but to answer your question, absolutely. We will, we will look at it and then we would, uh, put some number, number together for new budget is coming up. And, uh, we will, we will address it.
Uh, if, if I could add something to this. And one of the things that we've just recently done within the last year, year and a half is the planning commission now puts one of their planners, one of their planners down here one, one day a week, which is helpful because we don't have to process all that paperwork to do complaint amendments and he helps and assists with rezonings and stuff like that.
That's good to know.
So we kind of have a part-time planner, um, uh, just by benefit of our relationship with the planning commission. So that, that, just to kind of keep that in mind as well.
Councilman Chiller.
Thank you. Mr. Anisi, thank you for coming here this evening. Um, how many inspectors do we have now?
One.
You won?
Yes.
Okay. In the past, were we not contracting with the county or private agency for inspectors?
We have done. Yes. We have a good relation with the, uh, third-party.
Okay.
Company, third-party inspection, but they're expensive.
Yep.
You know, um, we try not to use them as often.
Right.
You know, they charge pretty much a hundred dollars per hour.
Absolutely.
Four thousand dollars a week.
Yeah.
So, and again, once we really truly need it, if somebody's out, you know, for vacation or sick, we will pick up the phone and call them. But we have a contract with them. They will come onboard. Yes.
Well, I think, you know, my opinion is it's a, it's a very wise move. Um, uh, one thing that I know in Temple Terrace is when you call for inspection, it, it happens pretty quickly.
Sure.
And as, uh, Ms. Donahue said earlier, time is money. And an inspector, a job can't wait two days to get an inspection. They normally want it the same there the next day. And you guys are very good about that. Um, and there could be no better time to be doing this with redevelopment, getting ready to take off.
Sure.
Which is very embarrassing, earlier with some of the comments made because this whole city's talked about redevelopment, redevelopment. Last week, one of the main components, developers of redevelopment came in here. We approved the project and not one citizen was in this room. Not one citizen. That's embarrassing to show that developer support. Nothing towards you. Just talk to the folks that are listening and the folks that are here that think the city's going nowhere. It's time that we be cheerleaders when people actually want to come forward and spend millions of dollars in this city and renovate it and brand it because that's what's going to happen. Because if I was the developer coming in here to do something and this room was empty aside from staff, I'd take a second look at it and say, is this really where I want to be? And they are going to bring us a nice bank. They are going to bring us a Starbucks, quality businesses that we will patron often. So things are happening in Temple Terrace. I think your timing is excellent with redevelopment, getting ready to take off.
Yes, sir.
Um, so job well done and, and I support your endeavors 100%.
Thank you. Just want to, for the public, okay, um, we have projects ready to get, you know, uh, breaking ground at downtown redevelopment. I already issued a permit. Okay, we will have a ground opening pretty soon and they will put the shovel in the ground. Okay? So, and again, some of this takes times as far as going through the process, reviewing it, approving it. So we have a lot of good news is coming. So please be patient. Okay? Uh, it's a matter of time, but again, a lot of good project is, is coming before you. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, council? I would like to thank Mr. Anisi for your thorough preparation and for highlighting the growth in our community. Um, and. If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the addition of a building inspector to position in the community development department and amending the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget by appropriating an additional amount of $75,000 from the general fund to cover the cost of the position. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anisi.
Thank you.
Uh, next, a resolution approving an interlocal funding agreement with Hillsborough County. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Mayor, council members. I come before you. It seems like I come before you every other month for, uh, on behalf of an intergovernmental, inter-local agreement with Hillsborough County. And this is no different. In your agenda, it looks like it's for the water replacement, but this is actually for sidewalks. And through all of your documentation, it is for sidewalks. This is the 1819 one. The last one you approved was 1920, water replacement. I know they're out of order. I didn't quite understand it, but it's an extra half a million dollars. And I said, okay, whichever way you want to do it. So this is an extra $500,000 for the sidewalk improvements in those areas. And this is our first modification. And it is for those areas for the underprivileged or what the census tract would consider underprivileged areas in which it would be good to invest a little bit more money to, to do sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, council questions? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the execution of an agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace to fund initiatives under the Community Development Block Grant Program for an additional amount of $500,000 to bring the fiscal year 2018, 2019 total to $812,000, $812,487. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve the interlocal agreement.
We have a motion and we have a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boswell.
We'll come back any time.
Next, a resolution awarding the construction of master lift station SA to Wharton Smith Inc. Public Director of Utilities Troy Tinch will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek your approval of a resolution for the construction, to award the construction of master lift, lift station SA to Wharton Smith. As you're all aware, this, um, primary station has been a, an issue for the Utilities Department for a number of years, has experienced significant amount of maintenance requirements associated with that lift station. We've had some failures in the past. So we're really looking forward to finally getting this aging infrastructures, aging facility up and moving. So we worked diligently with the design team of Kimball Horn. Yeah, we helped them, uh, worked with them to help, uh, streamline the design effort and they took about seven to eight months. We wanted to kind of keep that momentum flowing. So I asked the design team as well as my staff to look at alternatives to their traditional letting of a project, which can take four to six months. So we looked at some options and found a contract manager at risk contract that would be available to us to piggyback with the city of Clearwater. And that contractor is Wharton Smith. So we, we, we looked at that and this contract will allow us to seamlessly transition from design into construction, basically shortening that window that you would have for letting projects, going through the process of evaluating, uh, different proposals and selecting a, a contractor to do this work element. So really helps us shorten that window. Since this is a piece of critical infrastructure for the city, it is, again, one of our primary, uh, master lift stations. We felt it important to keep moving to get this thing done as quickly as possible. Staff evaluated it. We felt like that Wharton Smith provided us a very reasonable guaranteed maximum price to do this effort. And we felt it necessary to go ahead and move forward with that. So that said, staff recommends the city council approve the expenditure of $1,996,381 for the construction of master lift station SA to Wharton Smith, Smith, Inc. To be paid from account number 430-3899-535.63-33. I will stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, council questions? Councilman Ross.
I do. And I, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, which is where somebody can maybe help me out here and, uh, city manager, city attorney can jump in here, please. But I'm concerned about awarding a $2 million construction project to somebody without going through a bid process. And I understand the timetable. I read the, the background information. I understand that. But could we not, and also understanding, we can't go out for RFPs until we have the engineer, the stuff from the engineer. I get that. But could we not have been preparing an RFP with everything but the engineer so that it was ready to put on the market when as soon as we got the engineered drawings? I, I'm concerned about, well, several things. I'm assuming this is legal or we wouldn't even be talking about it. Um, so I'm making the assumption that it's legal. But even if it's legal, I'm, I don't know that it's right. I mean, I, I, for a number of reasons. One is I have concerns about being stewards of the public money and being able to justify to everybody that we spent $2 million without even getting bids. I don't get a roof trim, I mean, I don't get my roof cleaned without getting bids. So we're spending their money, which is even worse. I mean, I can blow my own money if I want, but if I'm spending their money, I want to be diligent with it. And second of all, if I'm a construction company that builds lift stations, I'm going to be a little out of sorts that I didn't get an opportunity to even look at this project. So can you help me understand the justification for not, other than the timetable, I kind of get that. But just because we're a little behind the eight ball, I don't know why that justifies going for a $2 million. This isn't $20,000, it's $2 million.
So the, the Seemar contract, how that works is it allows for the co, the construction group, the construction man. construction manager, to work closely with the engineering team to try and identify cost-saving measures. So, at the 90% phase, they started looking at the design phase, our design elements of the project, and identify potential cost-saving measures that we could implement to try and keep the cost down as low as possible. So, as far as it is streamlined, as you indicated, and we are not necessarily looking outside for other bid options, but the bid option contract is available, or this contract is available through the City of Clearwater, because they made the determination that it's a cost-effective measure for letting projects of this type. So, I don't know if that gives you a level of comfort, but, you know, the end is absolutely, I agree with you. We are to be good stewards of the tax dollars, and I consider myself to be very ethical when it comes to matters of that. And I would never dream of coming forward with something that I did not think was appropriate. That said, I think this is the best course of action. If we were to let this project and we were to select the lowest bidder, there's nothing saying that this bid could come in over $2 million. And we would have no option but to spend more than what we have. So, it is a little bit of a risk on our part to take that on, to take, to award this to a contractor without going out for competitive bids. However, we feel that that risk reward is worth us moving forward this project in a manner we are seeking.
Councilman Donahue.
And when Clearwater initiated the contract, they did go through the bid process?
Yes, ma'am, they did.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the expenditure of $1,996,381 for construction of master lift station SA by Wharton Smith Inc. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution awarding the construction of master lift station SA to Wharton Smith Inc.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Councilman Chalera.
I do. I think, you know, Mr. Ross really touched on a very valid point. And I know the bid process is extremely important. I don't know much about lift stations. The small ones, yes, but not, nothing this size. I know in the past, we've done bids when we do large projects in the city. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, you waited this long. I don't know that, it's not like it's getting ready to fall apart tomorrow. But I think it would give a comfort level, at least to me, that if we knew what was out there. Sometimes, although Clearwater did it, God knows when, I, if I use somebody often, one time, once in a while, I keep them honest and just bid it again to make sure that they're still in queue. Sometimes I find them in line, sometimes I don't, and I move on. So, you know, I would certainly feel more comfortable if we were to have a range out there to know, this is the scope, because you got to, I'm sure you have some kind of scope laid out.
Yes.
And, you know, if a company change orders the heck out of you afterwards, then they're going to get a reputation afterwards. I mean, that's the purpose of having plans. There are unforeseen things, as you have in construction everywhere else. But unless there's some other dynamic reasoning why we shouldn't have a bid, you know, I heard, you know, Mr. Ross loud and clear, and certainly that's something that got my attention. So, you know, I'm interested to hear what the other council members have to say, but it's certainly something I would certainly entertain if there was a bid. And we could always go back to these people. At least we know what's out there. That's my comments. Thank you.
Councilman Chisler.
Yes, suppose we went back to the bid process, how much time would it add to the overall project?
Probably four to six months.
Four to six months, as you said. And what is the overall anticipated completion date?
Of the project, it's a little bit shy of a year to construct the actual project. If we were to move forward with this contract, we would look to start turning dirt probably sometime around the end of March, and then finish right around the end of the year.
Otherwise, we'd be starting in the summertime.
That's correct. I did want to bring up a point maybe to Councilman Chalera, that the opinion or probable cost, which used to be the engineer's estimate, was greater than $2 million. So, the engineers that designed the project, they provide us with an opinion or probable cost as part of that process. So, we evaluated that, and whenever the estimate came back from Wharton Smith under that opinion or probable cost, which is not completely unlikely, even in a bid scenario, it did give us some faith that the estimate that we had was a good, solid faith. In addition, the engineer of record, as well as staff, poured through the documentation and sat with Wharton Smith on numerous occasions and evaluated different options, and feel that this dollar amount is a very reasonable dollar amount to construct this project. One of the other elements that will aid us is, once we move into this contract, we are currently on bypass pumping at that station, full bypass. So, that means that the pumps that are onsite are no longer functioning. We cannot find material to keep them up and running. So, we have to continue to use bypass pumping. That comes at a cost to the city. Once we grant this over to Wharton Smith, they take it on as a whole. It is their responsibility then to bypass pump. So, therein lies yet another cost savings for the city, if we were to push this out and go through the traditional letting or bid process.
Councilman Chambers.
Okay, so if we go to a traditional bid on this project, what does that do to the next item on the agenda?
The next item would not be required at this time.
But that would be part of the project that would be bid on?
Yes, that is correct.
So, you're going to still need testing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me, let me, I think that the approach to this is, although it's a little different than we usually do, I do think it's a legal approach to this. I think that both Mr. Tinch and I are comfortable that these prices are good, and certainly without going back into a four, six-month process of RFP, I don't know that I can guarantee that we're going to be less than this amount. I will iterate to you that this lift station SA has been in need of repair for about 20 years. That's how old this is. Our concern with the age of this lift station, and I will tell you this, currently it is running on bypass. It is in that bad a shape. I don't know that, we could probably spend upwards of a half a million dollars if we have an issue over there. So, very easily. I, the approach to using Wharton Smith, Troy and I discussed this in great length. We felt that this would be a better approach to this, and a quicker approach to this, so that we can get this thing fixed and up and running properly. So, if council prefers us to go out for RFP, we'll certainly go that route. It's not something that's, it's not traditional for us to do. We're trying to, we're trying to save some time and potential problems here within the next four to six months. So, that's the purpose for going this route.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Further discussion? We'll do Mr. Councilman Chambers and then Councilman Chisler.
Okay, you've mentioned the word "it's on bypass" a few times. What is that?
Okay, so currently the...
It's not, it's not good.
Yeah. So, yeah. There are two pumps that, electric pumps that traditionally pumped the station down, and pumped the system on down to the City of Tampa. Both of those pumps are in excess, almost 40 years in age, which is well beyond their design life. The problem we're having now is we cannot get pump, our parts to service the pumps. And unfortunately, the fire at the sewer shop that occurred last October damaged or destroyed what little bit we had in stock. And we had searched literally within the entire United States to find that, those parts and that material. So, bypass pumping means we have two pumps, rented pumps, sitting out there right now, diesel-driven, that are running 24/7, and will continue to run 24/7. And if those fail, then we will need to, in a very quick order, go out and get a couple more pumps to continue to run. So, our back is really against the wall on this. And, you know, understand something as well, that the CMR, the CMR process, the dollar amount is, it does seem high. And I understand that there's some concern with pushing forward a project without getting at least a couple of other bids. The, we all know the market is ramping up right now. Construction is really starting to gain some traction. And it is very possible that we could let this go through this whole process and come back with estimates that are above the opinion or probable cost. And then, we have, at that point, we would have no option to go back. I guess we could refuse all the bids and say they were too high, and try and go back and renegotiate with Wharton Smith. But at that time, their contract price now may increase as well. So, you know, I'm not trying to force this issue, but I'm just letting you know that there are some concerns with not trying to move forward with this. And I did mention the costs that we are incurring every month for pump rental and fuel cost. That will be absorbed in this contract once we sign it. And that will now, it's almost turnkey. We will hand the keys over to Wharton Smith. They will take the station on, and they will move forward from that point. And that will alleviate a lot of time and effort that our staff is spending at this aging facility to allow us to work on some of our other infrastructure.
Councilman Chisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Shown, what's your opinion on the legal issues regarding the shortcut process?
The, the, this is a piggyback contract with the contract that the City of Clearwater has. And generally, Florida law requires that things be put out to bid, except this is allowed as an exception to that. Governments can piggyback on other government agencies' contracts. So, this is a normal process within Florida law.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm the bid queen. I just, I can't, I really, I'm a stickler for that. However, our house is on fire, and it is legal to piggyback. It's, and in looking at the documents, again, I don't understand these big lift stations, and I don't pretend to, but you do, and you have painted a picture that says we need to move on this. If, for some reason, this council chooses not to go forward with this, could you bring back to us in two weeks more information about this company that would make them feel, I'm ready to approve it, okay? But if this council does not approve this tonight, is there a way for you to bring this particular contract back to us in two weeks and give us another reason to go with your recommendation?
I could certainly do that. It would, again, it would also be incumbent on Wharton Smith to hold this price.
Right.
You know, a lot of these prices are based on current costs, and those may increase. And Wharton Smith in that time period may say, you know, we've reevaluated this, and steel costs have gone up, pipe costs have gone up, concrete costs have gone up. We need to now elevate that cost, that price. And so, you know, again, we could certainly do that. If that is the direction of the council, I'm willing to do that if need be.
Well, I hope not.
Any further discussion, counsel?
I'm not going to support it. I feel like we need to get a bid. I mean, I understand lift stations. At some point, I've been involved with them, maybe not to the scale that you have. The pumps don't run 24/7. They only run upon demand, and they rotate. This thing's been 20 years in the making, and it's still there. We're not talking five years. We're talking four to six months. And you could, the best thing we can have in our society is competition. You know, if certain companies in today's world had competition, it'd be a different environment out there. Try to call Spectrum of Verizon.
Sure.
And, you know, good luck. But the point is, it's a lot of money. You know, I've served as counsel a long time, and we've always been very cautious when we spend this amount of money. And we do, you know, in-depth research, and we put it out to bid. We've done that in the city before, and those numbers change when it goes out to bid. These may, they may not. I get it. And the prices may go up. I get that. I understand. It's a risk you take. But you're talking $2 million. And at least for myself, I would, I don't think anybody's arguing the legality of it. I don't think anybody's arguing that, you know, we need it, okay? We definitely need it. I just would like to look at other options. And if there's no other better options, we go here. And that's a risk you take. Something may change. It may not. I don't know that. But I know that, I think we would be better served economically and publicly, that, and there are options. It's not like the, all the city sewers are going to back up. It's, you know, there's, you go out there, and you make a repair, and you make it work. So, I'm, I mean, I'm not as scared as the conversation sounded. I have a little bit of knowledge on lift stations. So, they can be put into a position where they can run temporarily. But since it's this amount of money, I would, as one person, I would support going out to bid. Thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel? Would ask all in favor signify with aye.
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 Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Motion fails. Thank you. I believe I heard you say, Mr. Tinch, there's no need for us to hear item 8F based on this vote?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We will...
Excuse me, can I?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
So, do we need to give authorization to go to a bid, or will staff just do that on their own, or?
We will move this into a bid process.
We'll pick it up from there. We'll get it, we'll get it started.
Thank you.
As quick as we can.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Thank you. We will move to council business. Is there any carryover business from our previous meeting, counsel? Seeing none, new business. And first item under new business is a discussion of county ordinance authorizing sterile needle and syringe exchange program. City Manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. A couple weeks ago, Mrs. Shown had shared a proposed ordinance that the county is proposing to initiate a needle exchange program by, by ordinance, basically, in the created ordinance. Currently, there is not one. This is certainly one of those things that has a lot of legal implications to it, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Shown, who can explain to you the essence of the ordinance.
Thank you. The copy of the ordinance was shared with counsel, and I'm going to just cut to really what the questions are as to how this affects the City of Temple Terrace, as to what we have to do, or what it's going to cost us. The law, the Florida statute that designed this program and authorized this program was Florida Statute 381.0038, for anyone out there who's interested in looking it up. In order to establish such a program, a county commission has to authorize it. And it, in fact, says that the local governments, the county and the city, are not allowed to contribute money to this program. This must operate on grants, private resources, and so essentially, it does not cost us anything. There are currently, and I think we have someone here who had presented, in fact, to the, to the county commission already, and who's here to talk to you a little bit more about this this evening in a few moments. But there, I've been told that there are already four mobile units operating in Hill, no, three operating in Hillsborough County. Right now, one of them is near USF. The Assistant County Attorney that I spoke to said that because of that particular location, it is very unlikely that we would have some other mobile unit suddenly operating within the city limits of Temple Terrace. So, the closest one is near USF, and it would probably stay there. Another one is being operated downtown. And I believe, she said, another one is at, I want to say Hillsborough and 22nd, or Hillsborough and 20th. I can't remember exactly where. But they expect to have four of them if this is approved. Right now, this, the, and the goal of this particular statute, and the goal and purpose of the proposed county ordinance is to, to deal with the prevention of disease transmission. That has to be the goal of the program pursuant to the Florida law. As far as how it would impact any of our city employees, it would really only affect, it should only affect the police department. it should only affect the police department. It may impact the fire department to some degree, but it would impact the police department in that a needle, a syringe that is distributed through the program or that is received from the program would not be considered drug paraphernalia for the purposes of that person who has that particular item being arrested or charged with the crime of possession. So, the partners, too, within the county ordinance proposal are the Tampa Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. So, they are both designated as partners in this. The county, if they do, that they're considering this tomorrow, and if the county does adopt this, it is countywide. So, it is not something where the city of Temple Terrace can say, "No, we're opting out," or "Yes, we're opting in." The way the statute was written, this is for a county commission to authorize. The only other thing that the city could do is we could implement our own program to do this kind of service. We are not given the opportunity to adopt an ordinance saying, "No, we're not." We can adopt an ordinance saying, "We're going to do a syringe exchange program ourselves." But I don't think that's what you all would be considering at this time. So, that's the basis of it. There are certain, there's a list within the statute of things that the county must do in order to operate this kind of a program, or they're really not operating it. They're contracting with someone else to do it. So, even the county is not specifically operating it. They are simply authorizing that it be conducted within the county. And I believe that Ms. Henderson is here now. Yeah, she drove over from Pinellas through this traffic in order to be here tonight. So, if you have any other questions about the purpose of the program, she would be the one to ask the questions of.
Hi, everyone. My name is Heather Henderson and I work in the emergency room of Tampa General Hospital and I specialize in addiction treatment. And I'm grateful to come here and talk to you today about this. I'll keep it short and sweet and then I'll be open for questions. In the exchange, like she said, we will have three sites and it is a mobile exchange. The mobile unit is already operating. It's Tampa Bay Street Medicine and it's ran by the USF Internal Medicine residents and medical students. We would just be adding these services in. And I think what's important to note is it would be a one-for-one exchange. They would have to bring used equipment and it would be one-for-one. But that's really just the tip of the iceberg. We're doing this to get them into services. So, we're going to be referring to substance use disorder treatment. We're going to be doing HIV and hepatitis C rapid testing. We can diagnose right there on site. We'll be doing sexually transmitted infection testing. We have a limited number of housing vouchers for intermediate housing for homeless patients that are seen. There's an AR and P on the site that we'll be able to do some PCP-based stuff, diabetes, hypertension, address soft tissue skin infections, administer antibiotics. The van has Wi-Fi. And so, we'll be able to enroll people in the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan for those who are uninsured. And really, this is just an access point to just, it's a harm reduction measure to keep them alive until we can get them into treatment. And it offers a lot of wraparound services. We will have a peer support specialist on the van that is certified in recovery themselves who can operate as a linkage care specialist who will do a warm handoff to treatment. And every time they engage in services, we will be recording that and we will be sort of scoring them on their stages of readiness. How close are we getting them to recovery every time we see them? And that's what it's about, is getting them into recovery and treatment. Also, it's about stopping infectious disease transmission. For my patients that I see, about 74% of them are hepatitis C positive, chronic. And if you, we were able to just 10% reduction in HIV transmission, it would save $16 million over the lifetime of a single patient. So, that's the long and short of it. I would be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
And I'm sorry, prior to questions from Council, we need to take public comment. Thank you very much. We do have some members of the public that would like to comment on this this evening. First, Joe Affronti.
I'm not exactly clear on what this discussion is going to be tonight. I thought originally it was going to be for Temple Terrace to approve an exchange in Temple Terrace. So, what exactly, what are we doing tonight? What is the purpose of this? Because if you say that it's out of our control as to whether we endorse this program or not, I don't understand.
I sent the information to City Council and I believe at least one City Council member wanted to have this placed in front of the public for discussion.
Oh, okay.
That's all I know as to why it's here. So, if it's for public information more than anything else. But Council does have the option, just as any individual here, to let the county know tomorrow, they're having their meeting, their hearing on this, to let them know that you do not support this or to let them know that you do support this. If Council wants to vote as a body to not support this, they can do that. If they want to vote to support it, they can do that as well.
Okay. I was just concerned that we were looking to adopt a program here in Temple Terrace, which I am totally against. I think that all it does is encourage drug users to come into Temple Terrace if that's the case and exchange their paraphernalia. I just don't want to see Temple Terrace become another San Francisco. All it would do is encourage druggies to come into Temple Terrace if that were the case, if we had a place here for the exchange. But if we don't, I still want to express my total disagreement with this program. I see nothing. I'd like to know what percentage of those that come in with the needle exchange actually go into treatment?
So, the exchange in Miami, they have about 70% success rate?
Come on to the microphone.
Ma'am, you have to come to the podium.
The only exchange right now is in Miami. And might I remind you that this is a pilot program that we're starting and it is being externally validated by USF. Miami has reduced, is about 900 overdoses and they have a 70, about a 70% success rate in engaging patients and getting them into services.
So, they get into treatment?
Absolutely. That's the whole point of this.
70%. That's awesome. But I'm still opposed to the program. I just don't, I don't see any advantage in it. And the cities that, I looked it up on Google today, the average cost to a city to do this is $160,000. And my thinking is, I'd rather spend $160,000 to make our city a better place than to exchange drug paraphernalia. That's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Affronti. Ellen Snelling.
I do know quite a bit about this program. I spoke at the very first Board of County Commission meeting about it and I had some reservations. I know a lot about needles and heroin and everything because of my own family. My brother was a heroin user and he died of a car fentanyl overdose in Miami-Dade in 2016. So, I know how addiction can affect a family. That being said, you know, first reaction, I felt the same as Joe. Now, I don't want anything to do with this. I don't want to enable drug use. But the explanation that was just given and also what our attorney said and from what everything I found out, I, you know, reservingly support the program. I feel like this is even better than what's happened in Miami-Dade as far as if USF is going to be evaluating it. And they were told, you know, some of the conditions, they want to make sure that we do get as many people into treatment. And I'm saying "we," but during, in this program, which is not funded at all by any county funds. So, it's all through private donations. It's actually, as it's been already said, it's already happening. There's a lot of USF, Marsoni College of Medicine is involved. There's a group called the Tampa Bay Street Medicine Group, which actually is coming to the next Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance meeting so we can find out more about it. So, everything I've learned about it makes me feel more comfortable. When people are shooting up drugs, I mean, no one wakes up and says, "Oh, I want to shoot up drugs." You know, it's kind of the worst-case scenario. So, you're at the end of a long process. My group, the Anti-Drug Alliance, we want to prevent drug abuse. We want to prevent people from ever getting to this point. But the ones that are, it's a very hard-to-reach population. These mobile units are going to be going to very high-risk neighborhoods and helping people that are hard to reach, that are hard to get medical care and all the treatment that they need. If we can get a significant portion of them into treatment, that would have never happened. So, as far as San Francisco and those kind of places, from what I understand, it's not a one-to-one exchange. It's like giving it out. In fact, quantities and not taking it back in until the next day when they're all over the street. So, I just don't want anybody to think of anything like that is what we're considering here. And that's pretty much it. I just want to say, as a family member of someone who has died from an overdose, I still feel like this is a good program to at least try as a pilot and see if it can help people get into treatment. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address Council on this item?
My name is Tara Ferguson and I'm a Temple Terrace resident. I have two questions. It sounds like you're offering a lot of services to a hard-to-reach population. Do you have to do a needle exchange because there's other reasons to bring them into the program? And that allowing, then, for people who are, you know, caught doing bad things with needles, then that can actually be evidence that would be an issue for me. If you have Wi-Fi and other things, do we have to do a needle exchange? I don't know. I'm asking that question. And then, I guess the second, the second question I would have is, what are some other ways or what are some other ways we can reach this population that would be effective? Has anything else been, you know, sought of? You've mentioned a lot of other services, so I would just explore that a little bit more.
Yeah, you can answer.
Thank you for your comments. So, like the previous speaker said, this is a very hard-to-reach population and they're already using drugs intravenously. And so, what we're trying to do is we're trying to mitigate harm and get them into treatment. And I know the gentleman cited that one of the programs was $160,000. That can be less than a week's hospital stay for diseases related to intravenous drug use, like skin infections, soft tissue infections, heart infections. So, this program actually will save the county a lot of money in hospital expenditures and will be able to access people that are already, you know, sort of partaking in those sorts of behaviors. And then, we can, each time we interact with them is an opportunity to course correct and try to get them into treatment.
But do you have to exchange the needles?
Yeah, because that's what reduces disease transmission and that's what keeps them out of the hospital with all of the infections.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If you'd please come forward, state your name and your city of residence and make your comment.
Hi, my name's Kristen Spitler.
City of residence?
I'm in Temple Terrace. So, in recent months, the last six, eight months, I've been noticing a lot more homeless population on the streets around Temple Terrace. And I think that anything that anybody is doing to try to mitigate this situation, that's a good thing. I don't, I'm not super familiar with this program, so I just wanted to say that I think that this is a potentially really good effort that's going forward, but that I would also like to see more efforts done by the city to try to keep people from being on the streets. Because, I mean, I go to the grocery store, I go to get gas. Every time I go to the grocery store or to get gas, I have somebody approach me and ask me for food or money. That doesn't make me feel safe. I feel like I have to take pepper spray into the grocery store. So, I would like to see more efforts being done in whatever manner has been proven to help them out. So.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say. Thank you.
My questions are, number one, do you plan, would you have any thoughts about expanding the program in the near future or any schedule on the program, assuming it's successful?
So, yes, if the pilot does prove successful, we would consider expanding it so more people would have access. What we're thinking about doing is having medical students and public health students going, do needs assessments into hard-to-reach neighborhoods to see where the need would be greatest before we made that decision.
Well, kind of a follow-up on that. Do you plan on doing, using students to actually learn off of that? Okay. Now, the other question is, mental health issues, is that a big factor in that? In other words, people that are having, let's say, mental problems?
Yeah, absolutely. So, a large portion of this population does also have a mental health issue. That's one of the reasons that they could develop an addiction in the first place. So, they will have access to psychiatry and psychology and we will get them the resources that they need for their mental health issues as well.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Please come forward and state your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Gary McNeil. I live at 4613 Serena Drive in Tampa, but I work in Temple Terrace. My ministry is, I'm a pastor at Mission Hill Church. Thank you to this young lady for her care for those that are really struggling with some difficult circumstances in their life. There are some studies that show this kind of treatment can be effective. There are multiple studies that show it does not create the kind of help that is needed for people that are drug addicted. So, I want to make it short and I don't want to cite all the studies that are for or against. I appreciate her heart for trying to reach out to folks. I think even I can hear in her voice, she's very genuine about what she's doing. I just want you to think of it as a personal issue. I've worked with, as a pastor, people that are living in addictions. I hope the Council would not approve of the program, especially coming into this area. The real issue is, bottom line, is what can we do? And so, I just want to say something I think that most of us would agree with. I believe it's your heart. It would be love your neighbor as yourself. When you really think about sometimes a convoluted thinking, it's not necessarily help to continue to provide those that are looking for a way just to continue their drug addiction. It is a real struggle. It's very hard to move people into programs that help them. But ultimately, that's by far the best choice. So, I hope, as a Council, you would stand against the needle exchange. Efforts and finances in other areas can be very effective. Many studies have proved that. So, I hope that you would consider that. Love your neighbor as yourself. What would you want them to do for you? I would want them to do the best for me. And I don't think the needle exchange program would be the best for them or for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I know when this item was brought to us, my request was that our Chief of Police be included in this discussion before we went to Council discussion. So, if acceptable, I would ask Chief Ken Albano to come forward. In addition to serving our city, we know that Chief also serves at the statewide level. And I would just ask Chief his views on a needle exchange program because he has certainly seen it from both policing in our city, but also on a statewide, has a wider view. Chief?
Mayor and City Council members. First of all, it's not just the homeless that you're talking about when you're talking about people that are suffering from addictions. Transcends all socioeconomic barriers. It's not something that you see in the impoverished and it's not something that you don't see in the very wealthy. It is something that can steal the life away from any member of our society at any time. Secondly, I would say, we're discussing- say, we're, we're discussing an issue, as the attorney has, has shared, that, I haven't read the statute, but I did read the ordinance several times, and I've offered some comments to the city manager. We are not facing a brick-and-mortar building whereby we're going to draw to a particular location in Temple Terrace, people that are in need of this particular service. It's not like a pill mill that we've dealt with years ago, and that was very difficult for us to, to deal with. And that was a lot of manpower and a lot of money that, and resources that, that the police department did, in fact, deploy to try to rid us of that. And we were successful over time. The exchange, based on my experience, is an opportunity. Yes, it certainly does deal with some of the byproducts of the addiction. The sicknesses, the illnesses that are a side product of, of that. Being able to do the exchange helps the people that go out build trust. Now, do I, do I think that there is a negative impact i- if there was a, a brick-and-mortar one location in Temple Terrace? Yeah, I do. Because then you're bringing people into your, into your city, into your area or whatever area it is. But this, they're talking about going into the neighborhoods. And I'm here to tell you, I've been working 14 years here. We don't have a neighborhood, thank God, in Temple Terrace where those mobile units would be going and seeking out drug-addicted citizens. We don't have, thank God, a overwhelming issue with homeless in Temple Terrace. There are a lot of homeless in our community, and I mean the greater community. Okay? But we don't have a, a section in Temple Terrace where we have a, a major problem with the homeless. And when we, and when we do encounter them, the officers are out there talking to them and, and offering services and trying to direct them to the places that, that they can get the additional help that they need. The way the ordinance is written, this body, other than standing together or sending the city attorney down and, and offering some type of voice that says that you're not pleased with the verbiage in their ordinance, the way that it's written, there's nothing otherwise that you can really do. And what I think is important, a- as was shared, is that, like it or not, these things are real. Like it or not, your officers are out there every night dealing in some way or another. These types of situations, not every night, but they're, but they're out there. We, we stand on the border with Tampa. So not that I'm trying to say Tampa has a, a big problem, but we, we don't deal with just Temple Terrace residents. We deal with people that live in Tampa. We deal with people that live in the county. We deal with people that come in as visitors. We deal with everybody that passes through. And to be able to try to reach out to a, to a group that otherwise does not have the support that they need to try to overcome their addiction, to be able to provide a segue, again, one-for-one in, in a mobile-type setting, I, I don't, I don't believe because of, again, thank God, we don't have some of the issues some of the major cities in our country do with respect to this problem. But that's not to say that we don't have individuals in Temple Terrace. Some could be your neighbors. Some could be the people you go to, you know, church with. Some could be the people that you work with that have this problem. And would it be beneficial to them to have at least a study done? Yes, I, I believe it would be. I don't see, again, because primarily, Madam Mayor and Council, primarily because this isn't something they're trying to bring into Tampa or Hillsborough County or Temple Terrace or Plant City and plant a building and draw people to the building. They're going to go out into the neighborhoods and seek out the people that need the help the most. And again, I think we're blessed in Temple Terrace not to, not to have those type of segments within our community where there's, there's, there's neighborhoods that, that are inundated with this problem. So I, I think addictions and, and illicit drugs are destroying lives. And I've seen that in 34 years of being a law enforcement officer. I, I don't believe that there's anything we can really say or do that's going to stop it, other than sharing your voice to give them a reason to at least take a pause in how they've written their ordinance. But I do believe, as was shared, shared earlier, that we should do the best we can for the, the most that we possibly can. And we should keep them in our, our thoughts and our prayers and do not vilify any particular group. I mean, it's a sickness. It's an addiction. And I, I think the, the effort is, is good. I, I think there should be some controls that we don't have the power to control. And that would be all I could really share with you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. I would ask counsel discussion, Councilwoman Downey.
Thank you, Chief. I think the last things you said were probably the most important. That if you looked at this ordinance, it clearly states that the organization that will handle this will be scrutinized, controlled, vetted, rules, regulations. This does not say that any one of us can go out and perform a needle exchange. We could and should be arrested for doing that. This is a specific group who will have been approved. I mean, when you look through the, I mean, it, it mentions just about everything you can imagine. I mean, insurance, it just goes on and on. Security, it's just, please, it is a very detailed ordinance. And I'm sure that those who put it together wanted to make sure that it wouldn't open a door. But on the other hand, the door that it does open has a hand that says, come inside, we'll keep you from getting something else. We'll prevent, yes, you have an addiction. Yes, this is life-threatening. You know, there's not a one of us who would go willingly into taking the poison called chemotherapy. But when that is required to save your life, you sign up. You willingly sign the paperwork. I don't want to compare this, obviously, to that, but these folks are already dying from addiction. And to offer them, for our county to re- recognize that in a controlled environment, we can offer a, a help to these folks. And like you said, it's been said multiple times. Not only does it, you bring in the old needle and I give you a clean one, that's it. That's the needle exchange. It's not, hey, we're open for business. Everybody come in. We've got needles for you. This is not a needles are us type of situation. So I, I, I hope that we, any, any one of us who have anybody out here who thinks that this is a good idea should, you know, contact your, your county commissioner and let them know that you agree with it. Is it a sad situation that we even have to do this? Absolutely. But again, this is, like you said as well, getting them to recovery is messy. It's dirty work. This is not something for the faint of heart. And thank you for driving all the way over from Pinellas County. We, we say it like this, as if like you had to have a passport. But, but, you know, again, I, I, I think it, we have to recognize, it is not what some of us feared when we first heard about it. And then when you read the ordinance, it comes with so many rules and regulations that I think it will safeguard and answer all those fears that some of us had. So thank you very much for participating in the program.
Council, Councilman Ross.
Thank you. First of all, before I forget, I'd like to thank Ms. Henderson for coming over here and sharing this information with us. The second thing I would like to say is I wish we would stop doing this. This is an ordinance that's being considered and going to be voted on, debated by another government agency, another government entity. We don't have anything to do with this and we spent 45 minutes on it. So the reason that we, I don't want to keep doing, I don't want to get drawn into these discussions that have no bearing on us. It's the county commission. Other than informing our constituents and telling them, if you're interested, here's Ms. Henderson's information, and go to the county commission meeting and speak about it, one way or the other, whatever your opinion is, whether you're for or against. Everybody's got opinions on it. But we create the perception among our constituents that we have something to do with this. We, we get people coming up for it. We got people coming up against it. We have people asking questions, which is fine. But this is the wrong forum to educate people about this program. This is, I, I don't want to get drawn into discussions about proposed legislation that another government entity is proposing. We spend all of our time debating something they didn't ask us. If, if you're for it or against it, go tomorrow and tell your county commission that you're for or against it. But I, we're getting drawn into stuff that has nothing to do with us.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. I would, I would like to address that briefly. We are part of the county of Hillsborough and it has a lot to do with us. We, as a city, took a stand about marijuana distribution in our city. And that was something that was coming out at both the state and the county level. This is something that the county reached out to us and did ask us if we had any comment on it. And I thought we, as a body, should not just comment among ourselves, but invite the citizens we represent to come forward and have a voice in this. This is about home rule. And if we need to remind Hillsborough County that we are an incorporated city and we have home rule here and we do have a voice, I do believe that is part of our responsibility as a governing body to have a voice. I did go down the rabbit trail and really wanted to be informed and really wanted to do some research. Ms. Henderson, I do appreciate your heart and your passion for serving and, and loving people. Do I think this is the right solution? I haven't been convinced. And as I've gone down and looked at the research, a 10-year federally funded study was done at John Hopkins University Bloomberg School of Public Health. One of the entities they looked at was Vancouver, Canada, that had had a needle exchange program since 1989. What did the Vancouver Sun report? Vancouver achieved a distinction. We now have the highest infection rate for those of HIV and Hep C diseases of any city in the developed world. In spite of frequent assertions that implementing needle and syringe exchange programs would be a self-sustaining measure in the current HIV epidemic, there is little hard evidence to support such a claim. And the reports garnered by this extended literature search, to the contrary, the best of the, of these studies indicate that needle exchange programs fail to protect against HIV transmission. Drug, drug addiction is a scourge on society. It does break up families. It does cause grief. It does hurt parents. It does hurt children. Not to mention just the community at large. Public policy, though, should not be stepping in in such an erroneous faction. This helps addicts stay addicted, all in the name of AIDS prevention. And perhaps even more shocking is that it's funded with government money. When you look at, and I kept going through studies, needle exchange programs have been proven to o- o- offer illicit drug users access to free needles. Communities are essentially enabling people to continue using their current drug of choice. Needle and exchange programs have actually shown an increase in affection, infection levels. Many people who decide, decide to participate in needle exchange programs are often already at high risk of suffering infection or disease. Some communities have found higher rates of blood-borne infections that link directly to the present, presence of needle exchange programs. Some programs have been shown to increase financial liabilities. Ms. Shoshon said, quote, "Cannot contribute money, but will incur, but, but will incur cost." We will be incurring cost with, if there are additional police runs and things. I just think it is, is basically bad public policy and immoral. I do have a heart for people that are suffering, that people that have this disease. Three days of going through research hasn't shown that this is a proven, and I do believe it is our responsibility as a body and an incorporated body in Hillsborough County, to one, speak up and say, there is a reason we are an incorporated city. We do want home rule. And I, I would recommend a very strong letter of, of, of opposition to a policy that hasn't been well thought out. That's my statement. Mr. Schisler, Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have some feelings on, on the whole issue. And there, I'm torn in some, some aspects of it. But again, as a body, we have asked Ms. Shoshon and everybody to bring things to us when something happens with the county. We had a tax issue not too long ago where people was, was really caused quite an uproar when we didn't know, we didn't know, and now we didn't. So bringing something to us, I think that's very important. I deal with the county and, and, and other, other venues other than, and as, as a member of this board. And it's Temple Terrace. Well, they don't care. Well, that's not right. Home rule. We have a say in this. We're, 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 we might only be the third-largest city in Hillsborough County, but we're here and they, and, and we have to be dealt with. I go through this on a, on a monthly basis. So to that extent, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for bringing it to the body. Can we do anything about it beyond a letter to county? No. We know that. We, we recognize that. We all read the ordinance. But it gives us an opportunity to explain, express to our constituents, hey, we, this isn't going, is it, is it going to work or is it not going to work? We don't know. There's too many intangibles that come along with this. Is there a cost to us at first? No. But will it get worse? We don't know. Okay? I applaud the sa- you save one life from an infectious situation. You've done probably all that you can do. Okay? But without the underlying, get them off the drugs, get them out, get them, get them back into normal society, you haven't, you're not going to get that. You're not, you're not going to fix the problem. Free needles or needle exchange isn't going to fix it. Getting the, the addiction treatment that they need, that's what's going to fix it. And it may take a whole generation for that to occur, but that's, that's another issue. If we could, in any rate, I recognize there's nothing we can do about this, other than send a, a, our personal or our, our board's proposal to the, to the project, even though in all likelihood it will pass. Thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Is there any action that you would like to direct or motion you would like to make for action on, for either Mr. Stevenson or Ms. Shoshon to take?
I'd like to move that we, we draft a letter to the county commission in, in opposition to the, to the program.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, sign?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. If we could direct City Manager Stevenson and Ms. Shoshon to draft said, said letter. Any other new business to come before, counsel?
I do. I have two items. The first one is a happy note. I want to announce the kickoff for the Women Build in Temple Terrace. And that will happen this Thursday evening at Bulla Gastro Bar. I don't know where that is, but I'll be finding it. It's on Howard Avenue. And it's the women in, what I did was I went out to the women's club, the garden club, the junior women's club. And then I sent a Facebook post and an email inviting women in our community to participate in the actual building of a house or two houses here in Temple Terrace through the Women Build, through the Habitat for Humanity. I was hoping for 10, and I got 20 women to sign up. Each of those women have committed to raising a minimum of $600 and to help defray the cost of the building of the home. And so these are women who you probably know. And it was quite, it's quite an impressive list. So with that, I'm here tonight to invite you, Mary Mel, to attend the kickoff, if you'd like to go. It's Thursday evening. We are meeting at the Woodmont Clubhouse at 5:00 to Carpool, so that all 20 of us don't have to drive to this location. So if you're interested, let me know. And if there's anyone else out there who thinks they might want to participate, we're still taking members. And you can email me at my city email address, which is cdonahue@templeterrace.com. So we'll, the build will actually happen April through June. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, and I'm not prepared to argue the benefits of the League of Women Voters, but I have to say, you know, opinions run high. And obviously, Mary Mel has an opinion about the League of Women Voters. But they have been around for 100 years and they are, what they've asked us to do is recognize their efforts to, on our behalf, to, number one, applaud the fact that women have been able to vote now for 100 years. have been able to vote now for 100 years. And our country is a lot older than 100 years, which means we went a long time without the vote. And that was much to their work that they did. But they also fight in court for other things for us. Now, we may not always agree on what they are. And obviously, as I said before, an opinion, we all, we have different opinions. But I will say that the process, as I understand it, was followed by me. And I, I did bring this to the city manager. I asked his permission, which I always make the, I had, I don't want to say I assume, because we know what that does to people, but I was under the impression that this would be vetted by either whatever process. You're right. I cannot ask my fellow council members if they would like to discuss this. I have a single process to go through, and that is to go through the city manager. Within a day or two, I got a response that said, "Yes, you may put it on the, I, I, being city manager, will put this on the agenda." I had no idea this would be a contentious proclamation. I had no reason to believe it would be contentious. So I'm not going to ask for the council to do anything unless someone really wants to have this proclamation signed. I understand that the mayor would choose not to do that. And I would not ask you to do something that you felt so strongly opposed to. I'm going to recognize the League of Women Voters, and I want any of you out there who, who applaud their efforts and to thank them on, I would like to thank them on my behalf, as a women who not only can vote, but who can run for election. So that's, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
And, and I will just briefly respond, not to, to revisit the entire topic. I agree that early on, the League had a very admirable beginning and mission as it worked for voting. I got a call today from a very upset citizen that challenged me to go to a website. And when I went to that website, it is a political action committee at this point. There is definite legislation on a definite side of the aisle. There is definite support of particular candidates. We have never brought up a political entity to reward or award. The history of the organization is admirable. Today, it is a political action group. And by their advocacy, that is why I encouraged people to please go to the website and visit, League of Women Voters. Visit their reproductive health in Florida. Visit their stance on gun safety. It's a political action committee. Good, good or ill, however you feel on any of those sides is wonderful. This dais is to be non-political, apolitical as possible. That means regardless of, of your support of, of issues along this, we do not stand and applaud or recognize political action groups in this forum. And for that reason, it was inappropriate. I agree full-heartedly, Councilwoman Donahue, that the history of the beginnings were wonderful, but to stand now and say that it's nonpartisan, and after I received the phone call from a very irate citizen and went down, I couldn't with integrity read a proclamation that said it's a nonpartisan group. It is most assuredly not in today's, today's world.
Once again, I beg to differ. There are things that come before the legislative body, us as well, that through research and, and other methods, a group brings forward for education and/or for a vote. And so because they bring those things forward does not necessarily mean that they are one side of the aisle. So again, I think we just have a disagreement of opinion. I, I, I do still believe that the League of Women Voters, as, as we have used ourselves in our candidate forums, that's who we went to when we were looking for a nonpartisan group to run our own candidate forums. So again, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the issue. And I've, I'm done. Thank you.
Is there any other new business to come? Mr. Ross, and then we'll go to Mr. Chambers, or Councilman Chambers, excuse me.
Just to update real quick on the River, as it, I think most everybody knows, the Hillsborough River is the primary source of drinking water for the city of Tampa, mostly out of the Middle River Basin, which is located in Temple Terrace. We had a riverboard meeting last week, and there are some new updates in the city of Tampa. Probably will be kind of transparent to us, but it's a, it represents a policy shift that, that we should be aware of. The city of Tampa has now started to purchase water from Tampa Bay Water to supplement their source of drinking water. And they're going to be doing this on a regular basis, which is something new. Tampa Bay Water, water costs money. When you buy water from Tampa Bay Water, or it comes from the D-Sal plant or from the reservoir, it costs money. So Tampa has been reluctant, for obvious reasons, to do that in the past. My question to them, to the city, was, to the city of Tampa, was, will this new program result in less water be take, being taken out of the Middle River Basin? The, the answer is that nobody really knew for sure, but probably not. It probably will not change. What changed in, for them to buy water from Tampa Bay Water on a regular basis instead of not, is that they scrapped their Tampa Augmentation Project. They called it the TAP. This was the project, a lot of people don't know the acronym, but you'll recognize that this is the project where they were going to pump partially reclaimed water down into the aquifer and let it naturally be filtered, and then they would pump it back out. They scrapped that, which was, I, I don't know if that's good or bad. If, if it worked, it sounded kind of like it was going to be promising for everybody, including us, because it would result in less water coming out of the Middle River. But for whatever reason, and I don't know the details of why they decided not to do that project, but they did. They scrapped it. So if you're one of the people like I am, who are on Tampa Water, even though I live in Temple Terrace, I'll now get the pleasure of paying more for my water, because whatever they pay Tampa Bay Water to supplement their water supply, they just pass that cost right through to their water consumers. And they set on the notice it's a pass-through. So if you're one of the fortunate people that are on Temple Terrace Water, that won't affect you. So.
Another, another good reason.
Councilman Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to commend Leisure Services and your group, Carl, for a great Touch a Truck event Saturday. The new location at Greco was, worked very nice, I thought. You know, the moisture wasn't great.
[laughing]
And the horns weren't great. But it wa, it was a nice event, a good crowd. I want to thank the rest of our city staff that went out, our departments, Fire Department, Police Department, with units, Public Works. I think those are the only departments out. TECO, all the other groups that came out, but it was a nice event. So thank you very much for putting that on.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers. Councilman Schisler.
Yeah, one, one final comment. Kudos to the administration, the staff. The buildings look good. It's, it's, it's a nice change to a lot of the buildings around town. The Gateway and, and City Hall and everywhere else. Thank you.
Any other new business? City managers report. Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, I don't really have anything else to report. Just a reminder, we've got a couple of events coming up. We've got a, a garage sale that our Relay for Life group is holding this coming Saturday, here in a parking lot across the street. Certainly come out and buy some junk.
Oh, no.
Help. Well, I don't know what I gave them. It was probably all junk. But I'm sure there's somebody else's treasures. And then we've got, obviously, we've got a farm night coming up here in a couple of weeks.
February 21st.
February 21st. We'll make mention of that again at our next meeting on the 18th. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. City manager, or, excuse me, city attorney, Ms. Shoshon.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. And Councilman Chilera asked for a moment. Mr. Chilera.
Just real quick to Mr. Stevenson, we talked about this, but there's obviously folks in the community that are uninformed, like one of the folks that attended the meeting tonight. Is there something we can do, put a big sign up, redevelopment, groundbreaking? Because everybody keeps asking, "When's all this happening?" And I mean, it was extremely disappointing, as I stated, last council meeting, that the gentleman came up, although he's been very delayed, but he was here to get his site plan approved and get going. And there was not one person here saying, "Awesome. Good job. High five." I think that we need to elevate the energy of redevelopment, now that you have a couple of significant projects getting ready to take off. Because people have asked me numerous, "Hey, man, when are you guys going to do something down there?" You know, I think it would be very beneficial to the, the city reputation, the, the naysayers, all the above, to maybe do something if you, unless you've already planned it. But we're not far from it.
Yeah, I think you had mentioned that before. We had approached Richmond with a billboard of sort coming soon. They didn't want to do, actually do that until we knew that we had a groundbreaking. Now that we've got a groundbreaking, we'll reach back out to them. Paragon, we can certainly do the same. But we try to put this information out. And we, we bring you a quarterly update on CRA. We do email blasts. It's certainly on our website. I, I don't know what else to do.
Sign on the government.
I, I just, we, we do our very best to kind of promote all this stuff. And you're right, it's disappointing. But when we work so hard to get this stuff to the point that it's at now, and we have somebody show up and say, "We don't know anything about it."
Oh, but I just think if you put some kind of signs on the property with some banners on it, temporary, something to get your attention, you know, city redevelopment, taking off, you know, join our groundbreaking, whatever. So people talk about it, and we don't hear negative things. We see positive things. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one comment for those who are viewing, for those who are in attendance tonight, certainly for fellow council members. If we ever seem stodgy, and certainly I'll point to myself, if I ever seem stodgy when I'm doing a meeting, it is by rule of how we conduct business in the city of Temple Terrace that we follow parliamentary procedure. That includes our rules of procedure for how items are introduced to the council. So I'd just ask council members, if for any reason you've misplaced your rules of procedure, please let Charles know, so that we can make sure that we're doing that and just acting cleanly on behalf of the citizens that we represent. Thank you so much. And if there's no further business to come before council, we will stand adjourned.